I'd like to call to order the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting for October 9, 2024. Roll call.
President Zipfel.
Here.
Vice President Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Andrus.
Here.
Commissioner Lestrako.
Here.
Commissioner Partha.
Here.
So we have a very special moment that I'm going to ask Commissioner Partha to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance because just yesterday him and his lovely wife had a baby girl. And so we're very excited for the entire family. Congratulations. And just maybe to top us off and lead us off, if you don't mind, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal rights and justice for all.
So congratulations, which we congratulated you earlier. And now we know that you can bring your family in and the baby can be here and sometime down the road, your daughter can do the Pledge of Allegiance. And so that would be a great, it'd be a few years probably, but you know, it'll be something we'll be waiting for. So congratulations again to you and the entire family.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Roger, Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Partha. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments on agenda items? Okay, we will move on to our consent items. Is there a motion to enter into the record, the consent items that are listed in your agenda?
Some move.
Motion by Commissioner Andrus.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lestrako. Any questions or comments? The items to be moved into the record are the police report for the month of October, the Hatfield Volunteer Fire Company report for the third quarter, the North Penn Water Authority meeting minutes of August 27, the HTMA meeting minutes of August 13, the VMSC monthly report for the month of August, and the HTMA monthly budget report for the month of July. With that, I'll call the question. All in favor of moving those into the record, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those are moved into the record. All right, we're going to jump right into committee reports. First is Planning and Zoning Committee. Vice President Rogers.
Thank you, sir. We only have one item tonight. It's the zoning ordinance.
Thanks, Mr. Vice President. Thanks, Mr. Vice President. I'll summarize this ordinance for the board. And also, anytime a zoning ordinance has changed, it has to be done through a public hearing process. So our Solicitor's Office has advertised for the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing for residents if they want to make any questions or have any questions or comments about some of the changes to the zoning ordinance. The ordinance itself is in the Commissioner's packet. I'm going to give a quick summary. I'd call this update housekeeping in nature. This is a result of, as Ken Amy, our longtime planner, was approaching retirement, he was making some notes within our zoning code that he felt over the years was either confusing or misleading, or there were contradictories within the code. So he was making tabs for several years rather than, since it is a process to update his zoning code, we don't want to do it all the time. So we want to do it when there's substance to change. So Ken was making notes, then Don Delamater, our new zoning officer, came on board and he found some of the language to be unclear. He was having some hard time understanding exactly what was, he was enforcing for certain matters that we'll get into. So he had a list. So we took this list, Solicitor's Office drafted an ordinance to amend our existing zoning code. We talked with our Planning and Zoning Committee. Then also it went to the Planning Commission, which was recommended for approval. Then it went to the County Planning Commission, recommended for approval. So among the changes, just to give you a sense of the substance of what we're amending, because again, we're not, this ordinance is not proposing any changes to any zoning districts. This is not changing to what someone could build within a zoning district. Those are what you'd consider large changes and zoning map changes. And we've done those over the years, but this is not it. So some of the items that are updated, and you'll see it in the ordinance. So the definition of family. So our definition of family, when it came from a zoning perspective, was very outdated. So our new language is included to be consistent with what the federal guidelines are. So there are housing laws that are well above the local government level, but that we have to comply with. So again, our zoning code was written probably in the 70s. So a lot of these things just needed to be updated. That was one. Daycare facility, updating a previous version that had a very outdated definition of what a daycare facility was. We amended to allow, in clearer language, to allow what is called a no-impact home business. So this is, if someone has, and many people have, a business that they run out of their home. It's not a retail business. It's not a business that creates any impact on the neighborhood. Maybe it's online, or virtual, or whatever it may be. But our code didn't specifically have language in there that would allow that. So this gives people the ability, without having a trickier conversation with our zoning officer, the ability to have a home-based business. There were some conflicting regulations that this ordinance then cleans up, and you'll see in the draft, just removing certain sections, referring to other sections, just so there's consistency throughout the code. Our previous ordinance did not have any regulations for certain setbacks within a townhome district, which we have several of those. So that was quite tricky to regulate and navigate through the years. So now it's clearer on what the setbacks would be. Most of, and a lot of this has been, the practice itself, the language is going to be consistent with how it's been applied for over the years, right? So when it was silent, the zoning officer is able to make an interpretation on what they feel is fair. Now it's not silent. Now it's more clear. Residents will understand exactly what they can do. Allowing daycare facilities in the commercial district was never specifically spelled out. It was always the intention. Now it's in the codes. So rather than all of these daycare facilities in a commercial district where it belongs, having to go to the zoning hearing board and going through a formal process, it's in there, written out specifically. Repair garage in the light industrial district, which was not spelled out prior to this, which again, was something that the zoning officers always felt with the previous language was allowed, it just wasn't overtly stated. Digital sign regulations are previous, the ordinance was very outdated when it came to how often a digital sign message would have to change. Ours was at a minute, which is not even close to industry standards. So now it goes to once every 10 seconds, which is a more modern and more consistent approach with the industry as well as our neighboring communities. Because a message board that can only change once a minute, or whatever it was, I think it might even be above a minute, is not really effective. There was issues with safety prior, but with new technology, the industry feels like 10 seconds is the right. And it's actually what our digital sign is as well. So some certain sections needed some clarity, such as what facilities within a swimming pool in a residential area would have to be applied for the setbacks, such as a deck, your equipment, pool equipment, things like that. Whereas before, it just referenced the swimming pool. So it was a little confusing to how this was applied. Solar, again, this is not changing the actual setbacks. This is just defining some of the items that need to meet these setbacks. We have some new language in there for EV stations, specifically for commercial use, and how far they have to be set back from the building, not for residential use, because most residential EV stations are in the garage and at a certain level where it's not as big of a fire hazard than the commercial ones. So this has some language in there, just talking about setbacks from the structure itself for commercial chargers that you see. So that's essentially the summary of some of these changes. We'll have a hearing. It's been advertised. The ordinance itself is available if anybody wants a review from the public for the next few weeks. Commissioners have it in their packet. And after the hearing, we can discuss further next meeting. And then the board can consider moving forward or not.
So just for clarity, I mean, I'm clear on it, but just for residents, the hearing is a part of our next meeting?
Correct.
Yep. So then what happens is we move into an ordinance hearing, and it's just right at the beginning, or kind of in the middle of our meeting, we discuss all of these items. We give residents an opportunity to comment on them. And then presumably, if there is a vote, it's taken that evening.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. No, that's great. I appreciate it. And that's a lot of, that's probably years' worth of
It is.
adjustments that, you know, Ken in particular, Ken Amy in particular, is pleased to have done. So that's all good stuff. Any questions or comments from anyone? Okay.
That's it for me tonight. Thank you.
All right. Public Works Committee.
No report tonight, Mr. President.
Park and Recreation Committee, Commissioner Lestrako.
Thank you, Mr. President. So for Parks and Rec report, we have fall fitness classes. They're going to start up for another session. Fall Zumba will be Sundays, 9:00 a.m. And the session two will be November 10th to December 15th. So please see that online. Also, there'll be a fall remix class. That will be Mondays at 7:00 p.m. November 11th will be our session two till December 16th. And then the next fitness class will be fall yoga, and that will be Thursdays, 7:00 p.m. From, that'll be November 14th to December 19th, and no class on November 28th. That will be a five-week session for that fall yoga. And then for seminars coming up, we have composting, turning garbage into gold. That will be Tuesday, November 12th at 6:00 p.m. here at the Township Building. And some events coming up. Halloween is coming soon. So Mini Monster Halloween event Friday, October 18th. That's next Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at School Road Park. And that will feature Hotel Pennsylvania, the movie. There will be snacks, refreshments, games, crafts, pumpkin decorating, balloons, trick-or-treating, of course, with local businesses and organizations. There'll also be a Mini Monster Truck Racing activity. There'll be inflatables, photo booth, our inflatables and photo booth from the Rocktoberfest will be moved to this event. And many of our vendors will also be there. So be sure to wear your favorite Halloween costume. And the next event is Hatfield Township Giving Tree. Our Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec's 8th Annual Giving Tree is coming. And that will be, the tree will be here at the Township Lobby, starting November 11th. The tree is filled with wishes and requests from local children and families in need this holiday season. Take a tag from the tree and replace it with a corresponding gift. All gifts should be returned new and unwrapped. All gifts should be returned here by Friday, December 13th. So our Parks and Rec elves have time to sort everything and deliver it in time for the holidays. So thank you for considering that Giving Tree. And a recap from our Rocktoberfest this past Saturday, that was our Fall Festival and 5K. And we want to thank all of our amazing vendors, crafters, businesses, organizations, and groups that came out to participate in our Rocktoberfest. We had a great, we had great weather, we had large crowds, and so much fun. We also want to thank you for, we want to give a big thank you to our awesome volunteers who assisted at Parks and Rec, and our Parks and Rec staff that set up and kept the event running throughout the day. Thank you to our Shade Tree Commission and Parks and Rec Board for all of their time, efforts, and assistance with setup and providing different activities throughout that event. And we want to also give a special thanks to our sponsors, Vinnie's Pizzerama, and Harleysville Bank, Unives Bank, and Yum Yum Donuts. So thank you, everybody. It was a really great event. Oh, I see our president right there.
There he is.
Our chief.
That there was
That looks awesome.
incredible vendor that every kid kind of just, you know, gravitated towards. My wife and I walked over and had to just check that out. It's really an interesting thing.
Is that you?
I would love to run the machine. I don't know if I would jump in on the soap, but it was, it was really, it was very popular.
It looks awesome.
Great idea. Yeah. So a lot of fun. It was a great time. So, okay. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Public Safety Committee with Commissioner Partha's approval. I'm going to jump in with this evening's report. I have something special at the end that I'd like to announce. First, some announcements. On October 1st, our officers conducted a coffee with a cop at Montgomery County Community College at the Blue Bell Campus. On October 2nd, officers conducted a coffee with a cop at Montgomery County Community College at the Pottstown Campus. So their chief, they've been very active, and we know that. On October 5, officers took part in a trunk-or-treat event, as well as a PAL movie night and our own Rocktober event. So very busy couple of days there. Also on October 5, officers took part in the Hatfield Jamie Mazzid Family Fun Day, which was not far away from the Rocktoberfest event, which is a great event, I heard. On October 11, officers will take part in a trunk-or-treat event at Hatfield Elementary School. And on October 16, officers will conduct a 5th and 6th grade safety presentation at AM Culp School. So a lot of events that you and your entire department already jumped into, and two more coming up already in October. And now we want to embarrass you with some praise. So we just learned a couple of days ago that the Police Department has gone through its re-accreditation process, and I say that, I use that term intentional. It's not the accreditation process. Our Police Department has been accredited. This is the fourth time that now it's been accredited and then re-accredited three times, which happens once every three years. And for those of you who don't know, there's only about 10% of the police departments in the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that get accredited. And of that 10%, only about 5% are actually re-accredited, and especially at re-accredited three times, making it four times accreditation. It is a very thorough review of not just the policies and practices of the entire department, but it involves individual interviews, document review, site inspection, and overall interaction. And I was very pleased to hear that not only were they, the examiners so impressed with the work that we did, they had some comments that I thought were just wonderful, which was that not only does our staff work together and has this great collegiality, but they recognize that residents viewed our police force in a very positive light. I think that, and maybe I'm taken out of context, but I'm pretty sure the story that I heard was that as one of the examiners was on a ride with the police officers, residents were waving at them. And they're not used to seeing that type of, you know, friendship and camaraderie between the Police Department and the residents. And that speaks to Chief, not only what a fantastic job you do as our chief, but the entire staff, because that department from top to bottom does such a fantastic job. So I want to thank you personally for, you know, your leadership throughout these many years of the accreditation process, the entire Police Department. And really, we're very, very proud to have you as our chief and to that department to be a reflection of Hatfield Township. So thank you very much. Yeah. Floor is yours, if you like.
For speech, anytime, much less now.
Well, maybe the next time when we have the Police Department, either because of a swearing-in or some other event that they can come in, we can do something again. Because this is just such a big deal, that it's worthy of recognition another time. So maybe we'll keep that.
Great idea. And I think, I think we are planning a swearing-in coming up soon.
We have a couple of things coming up, yes. Swearing-in events, and we also have a couple of retirement events that we have to go through as well. So we do have some things coming up.
Okay.
Is that the same office of retiring twice?
That hater hand come back.
No, no, no. We don't need any more of that. No. So that is the Public Safety Committee report. I'm going to jump to the Finance Committee. Commissioner Andrus.
Thank you very much. Our Budget Goals meeting will be next week, October 16th at 6:00 p.m. in this room. So please come out and partake in that process. And since we'll be talking a long time about the financial matters, I have some pictures project here. This year, the Aquatic Center had a contest for customers to submit a picture and enter a contest to win a season pass to the pool for next season. We received so many good submissions that we decided to worth three prizes. I'm going to have the Commissioners next to me help hold these up. One voted by the public, one voted by the pool board, and others, and one other by Commissioners. So this is the Commissioners' choice. You guys can pass that down. This is the People's Choice. And this is the Pool Board's choice. So, you know, the pictures are really great, and I think it's really symbolic of our pool and how much it's appreciated. So these will be hung where, Aaron?
Do in the lobby.
In the lobby?
Yep.
Which I think is a great thing to do to show our community. So great contest, great pictures, and looks like it was a lot of fun there this summer. Thank you. And that's my report.
All right. That's a lot of fun. And yes, it was absolutely a lot of fun to have the Commissioners vote on that. And very difficult, because it was one picture after the next was just fantastic. So congratulations to those who are going to be in our lobby. And it was a great season. So thank you. All right. Township Managers' report. Aaron.
All right. Thanks, Mr. President. Picture of Chief at the Aquatic Center was runner-up, by the way, just in case anyone wanted to know.
I think there should be some reconsideration.
Recount? All right. A few updates on some projects going on throughout the township that I thought the residents would like to see, and the Commissioners are involved in all of these and are well aware, but just more of a public update. First one is our leaf pickup program, which we do annually. The Commissioners awarded that a few months ago, week of November 4th, 18th, and December 2nd. So those weeks of vendor will be coming around. It's JP Mascaro will be coming around to collect the leaves from the residents. Just keep in mind, there are no zones. They can come at any point of the week. So we ask the residents to have your leaves bagged in a biodegradable bag and in front of your house Monday morning. We hope that they come by Monday, Tuesday, but they may come by at some point throughout that week. So three separate weeks, nice program that the Commissioners run each year to help people clean up their lawns and to recycle responsibly. So that is happening November 4th, 18th, and December 2nd. And follow our Facebook page, and we'll have much more information on that as well as we go. Moving on to our exciting projects that we have happening here in Hatfield Township, our construction of our police station and our Clemens Park. I have some pictures to share and some updates to provide. We'll start with Clemens Park, which is now really coming together. You can see, this was taken just last week, and now you can really start to see the new entrance, the new parking area. This is the pad for where the restrooms will be. And this is the new playground that's being built. I have some pictures to show you there. And this is the new road that will connect into the existing parking area alongside the trail. I think I have a different angle here. You can see right next to our firehouse, Clemens Food Group, Garden of Health. This is an angle from Clemens Road, just to give you a sense of the garden and the construction over there. So the bathroom is, actually I have some more, some more pictures. Playground's being installed. It's for the most part done. I don't know why it's doing that. New technology this month. So apparently it's not showing some of the pictures that I had on here. But the playground itself is, for the most part, installed. The flooring still has to go in. And there's the bathroom they're working on, actually today. But you'll see when you go visit it, and we talked about this being an inclusive playground, that I had a picture of our, there's a communication board for some of the kids that come that might be nonverbal. And there's a bunch of different emotions and feelings and ideas that they can point to to help communicate with their friends. It's a pretty neat thing that we'll see when we go out there. But I do have some pictures that aren't working. So that is an ongoing project that we're coming a little bit closer to finishing. We think the bathroom itself will be delivered in November, and we're hoping to have a soft opening around Thanksgiving to allow the residents to use the facilities. And then we're going to plan a spring ribbon cutting. And Ashley's going to help us with an actual event. So we'll have the Commissioners cut the ribbon, we'll give some speeches, and we're going to have an actual mini festival with a band and other things to bring the community together to
Great idea.
celebrate.
That's a great idea.
You don't build a park every day. So let's celebrate when we do.
That's right. Yep.
All right. Onto the police station. Not sure what happened there. You can really start seeing now from an aerial footage of the station, as well as what we just saw for Clemens Park. So now you can see the footprint of the building, the footprint of the range in the back, and the driveway that gets the officers out to Orvila, as well as what will be a new entrance for our nature area, and gives us the ability to draw more people into that side, and then use the 50 acres of preserved nature wooded area. So update from the construction manager on the police station. Concrete footers and piers around the perimeter to be completed by next week. Below-grade foundation walls to be completed by 10/18. Below-grade brick to begin on 10/17. Under-slab plumbing to begin on 10/10. Underground site electric and the telecommunications to be completed next week. Transformer vault placement in a few weeks. Then future work, steel, this is where it'll get interesting from people as you drive by CalPath. The steel to begin mid-November. There's a steel fabricator inspection at the end of this month. Main building and the garage and range slabs to be completed by mid-November. So that's coming up quick. Interior masonry to begin late November. And trusses, bar joists, roof deck, beginning in December. So we are flying along. Thankfully, it's been dry, in great conditions for construction project. Have a few more aerials to share. These drone shots are done by one of our detectives. So we thank him for his effort. You can see from a different angle from Orvila, the police-only drive that will allow police officers to get to 309 quickly and not get jammed up at the CalPath or Orvila intersection during certain periods of time. You can see a stormwater basin. This will be a range and a garage. And here's the building. This is where the officers will park. There'll be a carport with solar panels overhead that will help produce some green energy. These are some pictures from today, from a live feed that we have. This was just a few hours ago. So the project is moving along, exciting to see. And we will continue to provide updates as we go. My last item is an intersection that has a lot of people's interest, probably our worst intersection in the township as of this point. It was CalPath and Orvila until the Commissioners thankfully fixed that. And now it's Orvila and Welsh Road, which all of us have probably been stuck in this intersection at some point. We received a grant years ago to design the intersection, which design is completed. This is a snapshot of the design. As you'll see here, the yellow and certain shaded areas. What this is accomplishing is it's providing a turn lane, dedicated turn lane at every approach. So right now, you can get stuck behind someone that's trying to turn that can't, and that's where the congestion happens. Whereas, once this is built, you'll have a turn lane at every approach. People will be able to move much freer through the intersection. So the design is completed. It's been approved by PennDOT. We had a grant submission in six months ago, and we did not receive any funding. So we're putting in for another round. There'll be a resolution in front of the Commissioners to consider, and then we'll submit again to PennDOT for funding. Again, these are two state roads, just like CalPath and Orvila. And this is two towns, us and Talmenson, both partnering, both sharing the costs. So we're applying for 80% of the funding. Total project is $4 million. So there'll be a 20% match. We only have to do 10. CalPath and Orvila, we were on our own. So that we have a lot of advantages to this project. We're just hoping that the people in Harrisburg see the value in it, and hopefully we get this next round of funding. So that is coming around. We're not stopping just because we struck out. We have a pretty good batting average, more so maybe than the team that's playing right now.
Yeah.
But we've done well, and we just, we swung and missed on this one. But we'll just, we'll get back to the plate again and see what happens. So that is coming back, and hopefully this time we'll have better news for the next time we talk about the project.
All right.
That's all I have.
Yeah, fingers crossed on Welsh and Orvila, and the, very exciting about the police station and Clemens Park. I get a lot of questions about both of those, but especially Clemens Park. There's a lot of anxious people who are looking forward to that playground. So it's going to be a lot of fun. That's a great idea to have an event there to kind of open it up to the community. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We look forward to it.
Okay. Solicitor's report.
To continue with the baseball theme, I'm going to stay in the bullpen, nothing to report tonight.
All right. Excellent. Excellent. Well done. Well played. All right, excellent, excellent. Well done, well played. Citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments? Yes, ma'am. If you could go to the podium and just give us your name and address.
Hi, my name's Lena Nguyen. I live at 2300 Stratford Avenue in Hatfield. And then I'm here today because the road in front of my house is an entryway and exitway for Hatfield Village. Multiple neighbors, including myself, have reached out to the police asking for them to, I guess, patrol to try to reduce the speed. I'm sure you're aware, last week, there was an incident, there was a car accident. It was very loud, and there was also like a month-old baby in the backseat. So it was a little terrifying. Multiple neighbors and I, myself, have asked for maybe a speed bump or a stop sign. Anytime we speak to the police officers, we're recommended to come here and request like a traffic study. There's a process in order for something to happen. So in front of my house is a bus stop, and there's a lot of kids there for high school, middle school, and elementary. And the speeding has gotten to the point where the high school bus will pull out into the middle of the intersection because people don't see them, and they'll just fly by. And even pulling out, I've still heard the bus horn go off, letting the cars know, like, hey, my stop sign's out. I would just hate to see a child get hurt due to this, you know, speeding.
And I'm sorry, what's the roadways that we're talking about again? Where's that bus stop?
It's gonna be Stratford Ave. and Wellington Way.
And Wellington Way?
Hatfield Village.
Yep. I mean, my neighbor, I mean, she was backing out. Her car got hit, and she had to get- This is a few years ago, a different car. Maybe the last year or the year before, I had someone, a resident from Hatfield Village, drive onto my lawn and just swerve over and ride out. And there were tire marks on it. And where I'm at is where the kids stand. So if they had done this, like, you know, 45 minutes later or earlier, they could have hit a lot of kids.
And the bus stop is right at that intersection as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, we will look into it, for sure. And we'll talk to, obviously, the police, and then we'll, our staff will take a look at it as well. If you can, after the meeting, if you can give us your name and number, and then we can follow up with you. You're always welcome to come to meetings, and you could come back, and we can talk to you. But it's oftentimes easier to just reach out by email or by telephone.
I mean, that would be greatly appreciated. It's been hard for me to go to the meeting because I have young kids, and it's like early bedtime.
Yep. No, we understand. We completely understand. So if you just don't, we're probably be, we're almost done. If you don't mind waiting a couple of minutes, we'll get your name and number.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming out. Okay, any other? Yes, sir.
Hello there. My name is Tai Nguyen. I live at 2371 Cambreak Circle, the same with her neighborhood. I believe I am the one who sent the first email to Hatfield Township last week about the incident. The thing is that I lived in that address, in that neighborhood, for over 22 years. And the past five years, I saw three accidents, which I went out and looked at it, which is the one yesterday. I just heard it, and then I went out, and I took the picture right away, and then sent it to Hatfield, you know, Township right away. The reason that I came here today, because I am so concerned about it. I lived there like over 22 years, but the past five years, I already saw three accidents, which, two of them that I went out and actually, you know, like witnesses. And one of them that afterward, I heard from my neighbor, he got his car hit. So three of them. So if you look at the police report for the past five years or more, you probably see just a few. You probably look at the data and only saw, you know, just a few accidents, because people reported. But you haven't seen the minor accident, which people didn't report it. So if you add that data onto your research, you will see that. On top of that, there are a lot of cases that are near-miss accidents, which I personally encountered a couple of them. And my kid just got her driver's license last year, in her 17, and she got one too. But if you count the one that I reported now, but on top of all the people encountered a near-miss accident, if you add all that data up, the number will be significant. You guys see what I mean?
Yep, no, we follow. It's reported plus the near misses, plus the ones that are unreported.
Right, and a near miss was a lot, because at the stop sign, which is right in front of her house, her house is on the other side of the stop sign. There are only one stop sign, but the entry of Hatfield Village, there are no stop signs. So people just zoom, you know, from Hatfield Village to Union View Park. You know, it kind of speeds up. Which, I understand it, but if you have a stop, some kind of stop sign or the speed bump, people will mentally slow down. Yes, there will be, you know, eventually, there are probably one, you know, weird accident one time, but it will be less chance to have an accident. If people, you know, saw the stop sign, they stopped. So the percentage will, the percentage that accidents will less likely compared to without the stop sign or speed bump. Especially the past year, that I started to drop my kid at 6:15 at the stop sign, which is right in front of her house, I was surprised at why the bus was like in the middle row. And my kid told me that last week, there were guys who just didn't stop. And the bus stop was afraid of it. So one time she honked, the other time, now from now on, she's just like in the middle row. So that's why she tried to protect the kid. And it's 6:15, like, in the fall, like dark, it's really dark. You know, so, and my kid, and I think that she had two kids now who are growing up, and my kids were growing up from there, you know. But just like I said, that the past 22 years, that I lived in the past few years, was bad. Were bad. So I think it's time for us to put a stop sign there. And I think we can afford to put a stop sign there. It's just a matter of, like, you guys have to do all the regulations, studying, and all that stuff.
Mr. President, just to jump in, I did receive your email, Mr. Nguyen, and I did reply, and I copied our traffic engineer. And I spoke with Commissioner Partha, and he's encouraged us to- Your Commissioner in your ward has encouraged us to push this and to try to come up with something. So our traffic engineer is doing a study. Ma'am, just so you're aware too, ever since your email came, we talked to him. He's starting the process of putting together a study and his thoughts.
I think if you guys decide to put a stop sign there, I mean, you probably have her and her husband full permission to put a stop sign.
Understood.
Right now, it's her mailbox there. So you can actually remove her mailbox and put on the other side and put a stop sign there. So she are welcome. Because I think last summer, the past summer, her husband was concerned. He put some kind of a portable fence in front of her house, so the kid can play, you know? And that was, you know, every time that, especially a lot of the nice day, that I walk around the neighborhood a lot, and I say, oh my God, they all must this it, I must it. Just imagine, I am the one that saw it, but all the people too. If you add those numbers up, you know, that's not good.
Yeah. Now, we'll have the traffic engineer complete the study, and then, like I said, it sounds like we have your contact information already, so that's great.
Yeah. And just so you know, it's not a cost issue, right? The Commissioners right now are saying, go put the stop sign up. We do have to follow a process. PennDOT requires us to meet certain guidelines. So that's what we're working on. And as long as our engineer can come up with something, it will come back to this board where they'll approve it by ordinance. Once it's approved here, the sign goes up the next day.
Okay.
Okay? We'll work through it.
Okay. That's good to know, because I actually, because of the accident, so I went online and do some research, and actually saw some residents from all the states, they actually make their own stop sign and put right at the lawn. It kind of portable, they put there, and the police township didn't like it.
We can't recommend that. We cannot recommend that.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, unless there's any other citizens' comments? Looking at Ray. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lestrako.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we adjourn. Thanks for coming out, folks.